Here.
James Gordon.
Here.
Jacquette Allen.
Here.
Jessica Holder.
Here.
Judy Johnson.
Here.
Janice Baker.
Here.
Bill Hoffman.
Here.
Next, I'd like to call for the approval of the agenda. Any additions or deletions?
I need to make one change. Please move item A, which is Appendix B, Beginning Teacher, from information to new business. It'll now be item G.
Chairman, I would also ask that we move the call to the audience in front of the recognition for achievement.
Does anyone have any issue with that? Okay, hearing none, we will, I will call for an approval of the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Item number, so would it be item number seven?
Yeah.
Okay, item number seven, call to the audience. And we have, everyone has, where is it? Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Time does not permit dialogue between the board and the community. While the board welcomes residents to share their views, the chairman retains the right to limit discussions on a particular topic when such comments become slanderous or personal in nature. We've had several individuals sign up. The first individual is Boston Moore. And Dr. Howard, is on the screen.
Hello, how is everybody tonight?
Good.
Doing good, okay? So, my name is Boston Moore, and I attend Ashley High School. I'm a senior, and for my senior project, I decided I wanted to learn about public speaking. I had the opportunity to sit through many class presentations at Ashley High School, and I can tell you right now, public speaking is something that needs to be addressed in school. Public speaking is an acquired trait that comes from practice and repetition. I see my fellow students or classmates who are terrified to speak in front of the class because they have, they lack the knowledge on how to present. Yes, we may practice speaking to an audience through projects, but this isn't teaching the kids how to speak. This is simply teaching them to read off the slides they have. I believe that public speaking is just as important as our regular sciences and maths. I can assure you that ninety percent of people in this room use public speaking in their daily lives. And this can be whether it's running a meeting, talking to a group of colleagues, or even talking to a boss. Having a trait that can distinguish one person from everyone else is almost having the express ticket at Disney World. We use public speaking in our daily lives, and I'm just gonna name three. We use public speaking in our jobs and interviews. We use it when we're presenting our ideas, even to a group of friends, and we use it in common communication. And this is something that really concerns me, because in an age where technology is becoming more prevalent, verbal communication is always still gonna be used. Other students in my class may know how to comment instantly on a Facebook page, but after a week's worth of class studying for a project, they have trouble presenting. And this is simply due to being nervous and not having the proper education on how to present. And whatever path a young adult chooses, whether it's attending a higher education, going into the military, or going straight into the job force, I believe public speaking is a key to our generation's success. It is the express ticket, it is the express ticket at the Disney World that not everyone has. In order to get this ticket, to set our high school graduates aside from everyone else, I believe public speaking needs to be valued just as much as anything else taught in our school systems. And I respectfully ask you, the New Hanover Board of Education, to please consider how important public speaking really is, and how important it can be on our youth. Thank you.
Next, Hayley Boone.
Thank you so much for hearing me tonight. I want to welcome all the new board members and all the old board members, and just thank you for your dedication to the board. I'm here to comment on behalf of redistricting, which I know is a really hot topic and probably one of the most difficult subjects that you have to address as a board member. And I've already emailed all of you, and so you probably have heard some of this, but I felt it was important to come tonight and just say it so it's on record. I'm a mother of a sixth grader and an eighth grader at Noble Middle School, and I'm here to address the proposed map number four for middle school specifically. The last map that was released, I believe along with many of my neighbors who are here tonight, was released hastily without giving the community ample notice. I've checked the maps multiple times to see if it affected our area, and sometime between the meetings in August and the meeting in November, a new mapper was released, and I believe that, that good notice was not given to the community. I'm just asking for transparency with the board to really work with the community so that we are fully aware through multiple means, phone calls, letters home with your kids, all the things that you would normally do to communicate with parents, so that we know that our district is changing. We currently live less than two miles from our districted school, Noble, but with the new map, our kids would be changed to a different school that takes us many miles away. So we would be in the Williston District, that would mean the commute time for my kids would be tripled. Currently, they get on the bus and are at school within ten minutes. I think this puts a burden on families, and I do think that we should look at the map as a whole and consider the commute time for many of the students. There are students that are, that are not my children, but there are students in other districts that are being moved and will spend probably forty-five minutes, in my calculation or more, on a bus both ways to and from school. So I think we really need to consider how much time we're putting the kids on the road, on buses, busing them around to schools that, in some cases, pass multiple other schools just to get them to school. This also places stress on our already stressed busing system. We already know we have a shortage of bus drivers in the county, and so we need to consider that as well. And I think a consistent policy needs to be imposed on all study areas. It does seem that some study areas are being moved, which other studies areas are not being touched, and I really think we need to be consistent across the school. And we need to consider the relationships that families have with the schools where their children attend. Neighborhood schools are vital. We have strong relationships with those schools. It makes it easy to volunteer, to go have lunch with your children, and when we're far away from our students, I believe that the relationships are weakened greatly. So, I see my time ran out, and I didn't get to say everything I wanted to, so I will send it in email form later, but I thank you so much for your time tonight and for your service to our community.
Next, Donna Gargiet. Donna Gargiet, Gargiet? All right. Reverend Dante Antonia Murphy.
Madam Chair, I have documents that I want given to each of the board members. May I approach?
Ms. Adams will collect them from our board secretary.
I want to say good evening, and my name is Reverend Dante Murphy, and I represent the Southern Coalition for Equal Protection under the law, a movement representing citizens of this community and our great nation. I want to congratulate the newly elected school board members who ran political campaigns on the hope of making the school system and the world a better place for our children and families. I'm also thankful for those school board members who have survived midway through your elected terms and continue the quest to do the same. My purpose here this evening is to present each of you with a sampling of detailed cases involving improprieties over the years by the New Hanover County School System and its administrators. We believe that individuals charged to lead our children's education with dignity and integrity do fail, and consequently, governments and elected bodies in the midst of trying to do good sometimes fail. The reports that you receive this evening will afford you the opportunity to embark upon a journey to brighten a dark path that has been left behind as a result of a long history of cruel abuses within your school system. We believe an independent investigation and follow-up report regarding these cases should be completed by an independent agency as soon as possible. The pain caused to parents and employees affected by these cases must be remedied, and lost confidence in the governance of the New Hanover County School System must be restored. As noted in these cases, silence, intimidation, and conspiracy have for too long covered up unethical and potentially illegal behaviors of school administrators. Adequate contact information is enclosed, and we are respectfully requesting a written response regarding your intent to authorize an impartial investigation into the cases outlined. Thank you, and the citizens of New Hanover County and this state and nation look forward to your swift response to this request. Thank you.
Next is Ann Idelman. And I'm assuming Jan, Janice is coming up, Janice Jordan's coming up.
I'm here with Janice Jordan. We're both representing the League of Women Voters of the Lower Cape Fear. We're presenting a position statement that was written by the League of Women Voters Lower Cape Fear on school redistricting. We did present to the board last year, but since we now have four new board members, we thought it might be appropriate to present our position again. The presentation takes a little over three minutes. Rather than take a break, I was hoping that maybe with, if you'll indulge us, that Janice could just continue reading. So, the League of Women Voters is committed nationally, statewide, and locally to socioeconomic and racial diversity in schools. Such diversity is necessary to achieve equal access to a quality education. The League of Women Voters of the Lower Cape Fear came to you, not you personally, but to the board, in May of 2006, and again in September 2008, to express serious concern about proposed redistricting plans which had the potential to create schools with disproportionate numbers of students from one race or socioeconomic group. These concerns have become reality. Over half of New Hanover County schools are racially and socioeconomically imbalanced, with Snipes and Freeman having over eighty percent of students receiving free and reduced lunch. Five schools are low performing, Williston Middle and Freeman, Forest Hills, Snipes, and Riceboro Elementarys, and all of these schools have over sixty percent of their students receiving free and reduced lunch. Research has shown that all students benefit from attending schools with student populations that reflect the diversity of their community. A real challenge occurs when the majority of the students in a school are living in poverty. Then the needs of these students can overwhelm the school's resources and the ability of its teachers to teach effectively. New Hanover County is not alone in struggling with this problem. In the 2016-2017 school year, ninety-eight percent of schools in North Carolina are receiving an F grade, and ninety-two percent of those receiving a D grade, with schools with fifty percent or more of their students living in poverty. Putting interventions in place to meet the challenges created by high-poverty schools is expensive and complex, as I think this board has found. The school board has the opportunity to avoid the creation of high-poverty schools as they redistrict.
The New Hanover County Schools' first guiding principle for redistricting is that a diverse student body is important and valued. This principle often conflicts with the stated desire of keeping students in neighborhood schools. However, with population changes and growth, not all neighborhoods have schools, and schools are not always situated close to areas with high numbers of school-aged children. The term "community schools" may be a better descriptor and implies inclusiveness and an ownership by a community of neighborhoods of these schools. We believe that the main guiding principle for redistricting should be an equal opportunity for access to equality education throughout the school district. Redistricting schools is always painful, moving is difficult, and most families do not want to change schools. There are considerable challenges to maintaining proximity to the nearest school and at the same time diversifying the school population. This will require creativity and courage from you, our school board. Blaming parents for lack of involvement or our local planners for concentrating subsidized housing in certain areas is not productive. These are real barriers, but our school district and our community have an obligation to find solutions. We must increase the racial and socioeconomic diversity in all of our schools in order to provide the best possible educational opportunities for all of New Hanover County students. We owe this to our children. Every child should have an opportunity for success, and success should not depend on his or her zip code. New Hanover County's greatest asset is our people, and our jobs and economy depend on the quality of our public schools. The League of Women Voters of Lower Cape Fear County appreciates your time, and we would like to congratulate all of our new board members, and thank you to all of our school board members.
Thank you.
Eric Leibline? I apologize to anyone's name that I'm mispronouncing.
Thank you very much for taking the time to listen from all of us, and congratulations to the new board members. I'm here too as well for the redistricting argument going on currently, and you've heard interesting comments from all sides on it. As a parent of one of the children being affected down the road potentially, we have concerns. When looking at the map of where my child will be traveling from and where he will be going to, it just didn't make sense to us. In fact, the proof was this evening, coming here, I'm gonna be passing, or he would be passing on bus, within a hundred, maybe a hundred and fifty yards of another school, and traveling an additional six to eight miles just to try to balance these things out. In my line of work, it's important for us to look at daily, we have fleet vehicles out there every day, and we're always looking for ways to save costs, but not at the customer's expense. This added burden to the buses, the cost that's gonna incur for these travel times is, it's gonna be pretty high. And anyways, that's something I just want you all to kind of factor in. I know that redistricting is essential and inevitably will be done, but I ask the board to maybe step back a little bit, maybe not push through the vote immediately, look at the maps, see some of these students that are having to go absurd distances way beyond their communities, and see how it's gonna affect them, how it's gonna affect those families. I didn't have a prepared speech for this evening, I apologize, but I wanna keep it short and sweet, so just give it some more thought before you just put the stamp down. Appreciate it.
Kevin Hennessy.
Good evening, everyone. Congratulations to the new board members, and welcome. I noticed that some of you had children with you today. So, I too have two small children, six and nine-year-old in Ogden Elementary. Ogden is a great school. We love the local community that it is in that school. We live in Bayshore Estates, which is literally half a mile from there, and we are two miles from Noble. You guys are talking about redistricting us to Holly Shelter, which is twelve miles away from us. You know, you talked in your guiding principles of redistricting about the board is committed to maintaining neighborhood schools, attendance zones, boundaries should be minimized to change for students. I don't see how that's relevant in this situation. Changing a child that's seven and nine years old when they have such a community in the school they're in now, and that showed last night when we had the watchdog dads come in, and we had a hundred fathers show up for that meeting. We have a great community school within Ogden, and most of those kids are gonna go on to Noble. My children, if this goes through, will not be going, and that is a huge concern for me. Being twelve miles away is a far distance as opposed to two miles. It was nine point eight miles to get here tonight, and it took over thirty-five minutes just to get here for this meeting, which is tough at 5:30. So, I mean, going there in the morning, I drive to Southport, where I work, and I have a sailing school down there, fifty-two miles each way. To get back, get my children to after-school programs, whether it be soccer, or dance, or music that they do, is gonna be a huge burden, and it's gonna disrupt their lives drastically. You know, children have a tough time today with social media and everything else, and to take them out of a situation where they're in and they have such a good foundation in the school that they're in, and put them into a new school that's away, twelve miles away, that has no sense of community to where we are. And I'm not saying that Holly Shelter's a bad school, but for us, being so close to Noble, I just don't understand how that can work. I ask you to take time, before you vote on this in January, to look at the lines. There has to be a way to say, I mean, I know there's a lot of growth going on in Wilmington, a lot of new developments coming in, older developments should be grandfathered in here. They should be, we live in Bayshore, it's been there forever, it's been part of Noble for a long time. That should be part, and we should still be there, you know? So, I mean, that's something I really want you guys to think about and vote with your heart on this, because, I mean, if you have small children and you understand how vital it is that they have friends and have the community they're in, to take them out of that and put them into a whole different thing, it's gonna affect them, and it's gonna affect their lives, and it's gonna affect everyone in Bayshore, and everyone else is gonna be affected by this. You know, in closing, I just, I just love where we are, and I feel that we should be still going to Noble, and, you know, it's up to you guys. But I ask you, new board members who have children, old board members that have children as well, I don't know all that you do, but I just vote with your heart on this. Think about the effect that it's gonna have on them. Thank you.
Kylie Kanter.
I'm here because I have a concern about the redistricting proposal. Hi, hello. My name is Kylie Kanter, and I currently go to Noble Middle School. I live in Bayshore Estates, and I'm being redistricted to Holly Shelter Middle School. My whole point for today is to speak for all the students being redistricted. I'm strongly against this because as I'm a sixth grader, I know how hard it is to settle into a new school. I'm finally starting to get used to Noble, and now you want me to go to another school where I hardly know anyone. This is scary to go to the unknown, and I've done it once going to middle school, and I do not want to do it again. You also need to note that I have built my life in Wilmington with dance, church, and cheer. I'm not just some number on a chart. I have feelings, dreams, friends, and love. I also have grown up with my friends from school, and not all of them live in Bayshore, and you are taking me away from them. And not only are you taking me away from my friends, but you are taking me away from clubs and teachers that I love, such as Mrs. Rogers Book Club, which has helped me to come out of my shell and interact with seventh and eighth graders. Also, you are taking Eagle Society away, which is, which is what encourages kids to try their best every day and to strive and be an amazing student. So while you're listening to everyone else's speeches, I encourage you to answer this question. Why are you uprooting hundreds of kids? Why are you taking children from the life they know and the goals they've set to a whole other school that will change their lives? Now think about this question, really, really think about it. Is it for the benefit of the kids or the statistics? Now, if you're here and you are supporting Bayshore and you want them to stay at Noble, could you please raise your hand? That's just to show how many people want to stay at Noble, since it's such a great school and it's so close. So please don't move Bayshore Estates to Holly Shelter. I am and always will be a proud Noble Eagle. Thank you for your time.
Ava Meacham.
Hi, my name is Ava Meacham, and I go to Ogden Elementary School. My thought for the redistricting is that the many families living in Bayshore should continue going to Noble. For what? For we did not move here or to ride or to drive a total of twelve miles per trip back and forth to Holly Shelter, five days a week. Also, in school, it is hard to make friends, but sending us kids to a completely new school is even worse, especially middle school. Thank you for making the right decision and letting me go to Noble Middle School. Thank you.
Next on the agenda, recognition of achievement.
Madam Chair, nice to say that. Tonight, we begin by highlighting one of our great community partnerships with the State Employees Credit Union. At this time, I would like to introduce to you all Mr. Ken Garrus, who is the Vice President and City Officer of the State Employees Credit Union at the Myrtle Grove Branch, right here in Wilmington, and he'll tell us how his organization helps support our students and employees across the district. Mr. Garrus.
Give me just one second to get my stuff together here. Okay, congratulations to the new board members. It's a pleasure to be here tonight, just to briefly share with you State Employees Credit Union's role as a community partner with New Hanover County Schools. As Ms. Quatavon announced, my name's Ken Garrus, and I work at our Wilmington-Myrto Grove office. And I'll try to remember to move this PowerPoint slide along as we go. We were originally gonna do this back in October, but Hurricane Florence had other plans, so thank you for re-inviting us here tonight. There are six key areas I will highlight regarding our partnership role. First, we are a member-owned, non-for-profit financial cooperative established to serve North Carolina state and public school employees and their families. New Hanover County school employees are the backbone of our organization here in Wilmington. They are proud of their credit union, and they place a lot of trust in our organization. We walk our members through a lot of important life stages, buying their first home, setting up savings accounts for their kids, making sure they have adequate life insurance, and numerous other personal financial services. So naturally, we want to come on board and support our schools. We love supporting teachers and students, and do so with some unique programming and support. We have wonderful financial literacy and education tools for students and staff. We have a foundation, and the centerpiece of our foundation is our high school scholarship program. We utilize local advisory boards to enhance community impact. And the final two items I will touch on briefly at the end are volunteer opportunities and employment. So, real simple, our mission statement is to be the trusted provider of financial services to every eligible member, and to enhance the value of their lives and financial well-being while maintaining our fiscal strength. So, how does SECU operate as a not-for-profit financial cooperative? When you open your SECU membership, you immediately join 2.3 million other member owners of the organization who all have an equal vote. We have convenient branch locations, ATMs- We have convenient branch locations, ATMs, and online service with 24-hour support. In early 2019, we'll be opening up our sixth office in Wilmington, which will further enhance our community reach and impact here in Wilmington. Value personal financial services and products. In the realm of personal finance, we have a product or solution for most situations and always at a fair value for our members. Whether it's a traditional deposit account, loan product, or investment, estate planning, trust services, we can assist. Most importantly, our advice and services always keep our members' best interest in mind. Our staff is 100% salary, no commissions, no sales incentives, no quotas. We want our staff's only incentive to be what is best for our members. So we don't put our staff in a position to decide what might put a little more money in their pocket versus what's the best decision for our members. New Hanover County employees can count on us for honest, trusted advice. Our motto is do the right thing. So we provide a variety of financial education programs. And these can be hands-on, interactive learning experiences, presentations on a variety of consumer topics, and we have programs appropriate for all life stages. I'd like to take just a moment to go into detail on an interactive program we call The Reality of Money. It's a hands-on, experiential learning simulation, and I've had the privilege of doing this with the eighth-grade Murray Middle School students for the past, this spring will be our fifth year, doing this with their students. We suggest this program from eighth through 12th grade, and through the activities, students are transformed into wage-earning, bill-paying adults, and they must navigate through a variety of real-life financial choices. Listed here on the PowerPoint, you'll see the learning objectives include: living within their means, how to prioritize financial decisions, the importance of saving for the future and emergencies, the benefits of higher education and job training after high school, and maintaining good credit history as a tool for financial wellness. So this is just a wonderful activity that we're able to administer to the school. And I'd like to point out, too, that we do this at our cost. We don't want to place any burden on any school or club, school club or school for the materials. We provide all the materials for these events. So, just to look specifically at this example, in our Reality of Money, students use information on a randomly-assigned profile to make spending decisions regarding expenses. In the example shown here, the student was assigned an occupation as an auto mechanic. The student is married and has a second income in the household from their spouse. The annual household income is listed and then broken down into net monthly income. At the start of the activity, students must draw a card to determine if they have good or bad credit. And their credit status, good or bad, also impacts their choices during the activity, specifically at the housing and transportation stations. So we place volunteers at 11 separate stations, listed there on the worksheet, and the student must visit each station and make financial choices within the framework of their monthly What type of home or apartment will they rent or buy? What kind of car will they lease or purchase? How big would their grocery bill be? Do they go with the thrifty grocery plan where they buy all store brands and eat only from the grocery store? Do they like to eat out and throw away leftovers and waste a lot? So they have those choices during the simulation. If they have children in their profile, they must choose a childcare plan at the childcare station. Like many of us did as young adults, the students often struggle at the very beginning of the activity, trying to navigate these different financial choices, and they make some unsayable choices often early, and have to revisit a few stations and make some changes in their initial selections. We like to give our teachers the best job of the event. They roam the room with these cards we call Stuff Happens, and they hand them out to students. So it could be a good thing where grandma sends you $50 for your birthday, and they can add that into their budget they're trying to figure out. Or it could be, hey, you just got a speeding ticket, pay $100, or you went over your data plan, pay $30, and that really wipes out their plan they're trying to come up with pretty fast. The final station each student must visit is the next payday station. Hopefully, they've made ends meet before the next payday and didn't run out of money, but if they did, that's okay. This is just a practice and a learning experience. It takes a lot of volunteers to run this program, so the teachers will help us recruit parents from PTA and other sources, and, again, we'll provide the instructors and the materials, and we'll coach the volunteers the morning of the program and have them ready to go to assist the students. We love talking to our students before and after the event to drive home the learning objectives, and then they'll fill out a comment card and give us comments, and we get some great feedback from this program. It's always clear, first off, that they come away with the understanding that, hey, mom and dad's job's a little bit harder than maybe I realized, right? My personal favorite quote from the very first year we did it with the Murray Middle eighth graders, a student wrote on their comment card, "I don't want to struggle each month, I'm going to college." I thought, you know, wow, our teachers and our parents are working so hard each day to plant seeds like this in our students' minds, and we're just delighted that we can come along for one day and kind of water those seeds a little bit. So it's a great event. So you can see from this slide here, in the 2017-2018 school year, as far as the Reality of Money Fair goes, we had just over 500 students in New Hanover County who were fortunate enough to participate. We are prepared and able to offer this to more students across the school system, and we just need the invitation and the support to get there from our teachers and administrators at our different schools. SECU would love to assist in getting all students exposed to financial education before they graduate. I mentioned earlier, we have age-appropriate programming, and this is just a list of a few other items. Our Fat Cat is our mascot at the credit union for our kids' savings programs geared towards elementary students. We can send the big mascot out to the school and talk about just basic saving and growing your money. Biz Kids is a program sponsored by a number of credit unions, and they have a remarkable website, Financial Education for Middle School Students. And the last one I mentioned on the list there, the National Endowment for Financial Education, is a high school curriculum for financial planning that we could assist in instructing and helping students go through that program. The next item I'd like to mention briefly is our SECU Foundation, which is funded by $1 contribution from all of our SECU members who have a checking account with us. We simply draft a dollar out of their checking account each month, and over the course of the year, I think it's up to about $14 million that we collect statewide for our foundation. The SECU Foundation promotes local and community development, specifically through high-impact projects in the area of housing, education, healthcare, and human services. The SECU Foundation's People Helping People High School Scholarship Program is the cornerstone of our foundation. Each recipient receives a $10,000 scholarship to attend a public university in North Carolina. I've had the privilege of meeting the recipient at Ashley High School in each of the past five years, and these scholarships are going to some outstanding, well-rounded students. We track the success of our scholarship program, and it is overwhelmingly positive. On the next slide here, you'll see that since 2005, our scholarship program has represented a $620,000 commitment to students in New Hanover County. Just this past year, we gave out $7, $10,000 scholarships to graduating seniors. One other area we partner with our local schools is through our local advisory boards. Every State Employees Credit Union branch is supported by a 12-member advisory board. Advisory board members are volunteers, and we meet once a quarter with them. And all advisory boards in New Hanover County include members employed by New Hanover County These board members serve as a vital communication link between the credit union and our Board of Directors, management, and members. They ensure we stay the course. They affirm we're making a difference on how can we make our New Hanover County school employees' lives better? Where should we commit our time and resources? I look forward to every meeting with my board personally, and they are excited about what SECU is doing. Just here are a few highlights of areas that we volunteer as employees at the credit union through our school system. All of our branches serve as donation sites at the start of the school year for Governor Cooper's School Supply Drive, and that's, we've done that for a few years now, and that's going really well. It seems to grow a little bit each year, and we are able to get school supplies into some students' hands that really need that assistance. We have some employees that go and do tutoring at schools. We do test proctoring. Just today, I had one of my staff members was grading science fair projects at Belleville Elementary this morning. So, we're always happy to show up and volunteer. There's some other examples listed there. Lastly, employment. We hire your students. We tell them to go out, get their degree, and come back and apply to work here. It's a great organization, a very ethical organization. Approximately 25% of the credit union staff in New Hanover County is comprised of former New Hanover County graduates. We have five branches with a sixth under construction. We hire applicants from a variety of educational backgrounds. We're in the people business, looking for smart, professional, and service-oriented individuals to join our team. New Hanover County Schools continues to produce some of the best and brightest. So that's it, guys. Thank you so much for allowing SECU to share the many ways we partner with New Hanover County Schools. We look forward to deepening this relationship in the years to come. Our school system employees are the ecosystem of our business. Once again, congratulations to the new board members and current board members. I wish you the best year, next year, in 2019. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Could you, I do have one question.
Yes.
The Reality of Money activity, is that a one-day activity?
It's a one-day event. It is. We can do it on a large or small scale. We've kind of done it both ways, and we could run, the one I do at Murray Middle, for example, we do it during the class hours, and, but it's based on the number of students. We kind of have pods through, all the math classes are in one area of their section of the building, and so they kind of roam through four different classes. But it takes, if you do a large group, we've done them in gymnasiums, and it takes just a little bit longer, but it's a one-day activity. You can get a lot of students through in one day.
I look forward to expanding to other schools. I think it's a very important, it sounds like a very important activity, one that all our students could benefit from.
We would love to do it, so just invite us, and we'll be there, so.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. My pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garrus. Next, we'd like to honor the service and dedication of the Laney High School Booster Clubs. It's so difficult to measure the value of their service, and tonight, we want to honor these organizations for their support of our great Laney High School. So when I call your name, Booster parents, would you please come forward? Angela Edwards, who's the president of the Laney Band Booster. You stand for a photo. Next, we have a team from the Laney Athletic Booster Clubs. We have Jan Bowman, who's the president, Brad Erbs, Vice President, and Ms. Amy Holcomb, a member. Would you all please come forward? And next, we have Susan Garrett, who is the president of the Academic Booster Club. Ms. Garrett. Mr. Charm, if you would come forward, please. On behalf of the board and senior staff, Mr. Charm, and your school leaders, we thank you all for volunteering your time and service at Laney High School. Thank you so much. Go Bucks! Next, I'm looking for my friend, Ms. Jane Lott of the American Heart Association. Ms. Lott has a presentation and recognition for some top fundraisers for our Jump Rope for Heart campaign. Yeah, sure. Take over.
Thank you so very much. We have our certificates over here. I want to congratulate the new board and thank the old board and all of you, from the bottom of my heart to yours. Today, we're here to recognize some outstanding schools, and we're celebrating, this year, 40 years partnering with schools. And one of the things I want to say is the impact our schools, that relationship has made, has been that 40 years ago, if a child was born with congenital heart disease, their chance of survival was zero. Now, 40 years later, because of the partnership in our schools, if a child is born with congenital heart disease, they have 90% chance of becoming an adult. So that is huge, and we cannot thank you enough, and our goal is not to stop at 90%, but to get to 100%, because no child should die from heart disease. And having 40 years, a little history, we are now changing from Jump Rope for Heart, Hoops for Heart, which I know all of you probably are familiar with, to a new program called the American Heart Challenge, where we're gonna challenge your child, all of our students, to take care of their hearts, and not only that, to help people who do have sick hearts. So Keith Cummins has come in from Charlotte. He's our vice president, and he's just gonna speak for one second before we move on.
Thank you for the time, and some changes that we've made to our program. So it is, again, it's Kids Heart Challenge and American Heart Challenge for the older program, but we've always worked on nutritional and physical health. That's some of our messaging and what we've really been striving for, and we're adding to that, the component of emotional health as well, trying to address the whole child and the needs of, if you're gonna be completely healthy, you need to be both physically, nutritionally, and emotionally healthy. And with these health challenges that we're talking about, the children, they take these challenges at the beginning of the event, and what they can do is agree to either drink water instead of sugary beverages, or I will exercise for 60 minutes every day, or I can do one kind deed. If they agree to do this, it's just for the period of time of the event, usually about three weeks, and so we're hoping to establish habits there. But they're gonna also build character and self-esteem by pledging to help children each day, so that, other children each day, so I think that's very important. One other thing we're doing for our hurricane-affected communities is we have the opportunity, if we can get any school that would get 50% of their students to take this challenge and try and start a habit of doing something healthy, we're gonna give $500 to so that they can buy some PE equipment, maybe help them out. So if they could just get 50% of the schools, and we would encourage all staff as well as board members to take the challenge as well. And now, I'd like to move on and thank our schools that did participate, but last year in America, 2.2 million parents, students, and teachers took that challenge, and here in New Hanover, it was 1,000. So I know that this year, it can be many, many more than 1,000, so thank you. Yep, very great, right there. I want to say thank you to all the schools that participated with us, and we're gonna be giving out some awards to some of the top schools, but thank you so much. You're saving lives.
And speaking of impact, I would like to ask my very special friend, Grant Hall, who is our survivor, heart hero, we call him, at Murrayville Elementary, to come on up and help me out here. Here we go. And I have a special, we gave him a cape back in February, but we have a special little friend for him also. And so here is your certificate, and will you help me help give out the others?
Yes.
Awesome. Thank you, Grant. All right. So, Grant was born, his mom's here. Do you want to tell his story, or would you? No, I'll just, I'll just say, Grant was born with, he had congenital heart disease, and has done very well. He had a little bit of an issue, I think it was last year, and so I think the thing to remember is that when a child's born with congenital heart disease, it's a lifelong process. So, we not only need your help when they're babies and they're fixed, so to speak, we need your help all the way along, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we love Grant. He's our boy. So anyways, Grant, help me out here. We're going to call out our top life-saving school in New Hanover County. And they were the number five, um, life-saving school in North Carolina. So we'd like to call up Parsley Elementary School. Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. I'm going to read the names here. Hold on a minute, hold on a minute. I gotta, I apologize. I would love to call up Chris Walters and Dr. Robin Hamilton, please. This is Dr. Hamilton, gets the school certificate and Chris gets the Coordinator of Excellence Award. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you. And our top student in the county was John Peter Myers. Are you here, John Peter? He probably, um, yeah. So we will give you his certificate to take with him. That's awesome. And our number two school is Anderson Elementary. Mr. Curtis Fallon, the coordinator. And is Ms. Krista Holland here? Come on up. We've got certificates for you. Thank you so much. This was also the top school, the Student Staff Challenge. They did the health challenge and the, they had the most staff participate. So that's awesome. Thank you so much. Thanks, Carrie. Thank you. Number three was Pine Valley Elementary with Ms. Ann Suddles and Mr. Sam Krenthorz. Are you here tonight? Ann, you're on. She's got to take it off. Thank you so much. Please, please stay here. There you go. Thank you, Ann. Number four is Ms. Nick, wait a minute, I shouldn't say number four. I'm going to let you introduce this one. What school do you go to?
Murrayville.
Murrayville. And who is Nurse?
Nicole.
Nurse Nicole. Come on up. And Ms. Tim Dominefsky. And I think she's going to have to need a hug there, too. There you go. Thank you so much. Number, we have a tie for five. This is a farce. Bradley Creek, Ms. Kelly Humphrey, are you here tonight? There she is, there she is. Come on up. And Dr. Lauren, I'm going to try and say her last name, Kell Flotit. I'm so sorry. Dr. K, I'm so sorry. Thank you so much. And that was their first year last year, so thank you again. And Holly Tree Elementary, Ms. Leanne Young, our coordinator, and Laura Holliday. I think Leanne was here earlier. She, she must have had, she had to go, okay. Um, I just have, okay, I want to thank each and every one of you from the bottom of our hearts. Let's say thanks again.
Thanks again.
All right. Thank you so much. Let's get a picture for you. Awesome. Thank you so much. You all are lifesavers. And Murrayville, do not leave. We have actually one more presentation and we're going to have our friends from Murrayville stay with us. They did a program and what you probably should know is that if you want to do a heart event, we can tailor, make that into anything that you see, that you like. Uh, we've get very creative. And Murrayville did a very special activity in that what they did is their children collected money to help people who have heart disease. But they also wanted to impact kids that may not have the opportunity to exercise, to impact, um, the health of children at other schools. So, um, when their children raised money, they got a little, a little prize and then they donated their prize to a child that may not have, um, the capability of earning a jump rope. So they have donated these prizes to the following schools. I know Wrightsboro, it was. Wrightsboro, are you here? Anybody from Wrightsboro? Thank you so much. Thank you so much. We've got Wrightsboro. And this, thank you so much. And these are also awesome participators. Their children also participate in our Jump Rope for Heart program. And we have McWilliams Elementary. Is your representative here? There we have, all right. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. And Alderman Elementary. All right. And as we say, the program is kids helping kids. And this is your prime example right here. Thank you so much. Oh, thank you. Thank you so much for your support. What you do is saving and impacting our community. All right, give me hugs. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we recognize the district's 2018 Exceptional Children's Teacher of Excellence. Ms. Teresa Willetts is an intensive academic and behavior supports program teacher at Bradley Creek Elementary School. Is Ms. Willetts here? She's been teaching for 22 years and she's a leader among her peers at Bradley Creek, as well as across the district, and she is a strong advocate for all of her students. Ms. Teresa Willetts. See her principal, Dr. Kathleen Nidus, is here. Congratulations, Ms. Willetts, and thank you for serving as a model leader for New Hanover County Schools. Our next recognition is for the district's Outstanding Gifted Educator Award. Mr. Michael Harper is the Gifted Education Specialist at Trask Middle School. Mr. Harper's passion for teaching language arts and challenging his students to stretch themselves helps motivate students to excel in their assignments. He particularly encourages students to engage in public speaking through riveting class debates. Thank you, Mr. Harper. Congratulations. And our next recognition is for a very creative young lady who earned the honorable mention this year at the Professional Educators North Carolina Young Artist Competition. At this time, I would like to ask Ms. Evelyn Martinez Menhanos to please come forward to be recognized. Evelyn is a third grade student at Wrightsboro Elementary School. She earned an honorable mention, you can see it on the screen, for her beautiful artwork. It's a watercolor painting of the Cape Fear Memorial Bridge and the downtown Wilmington Riverfront. Her painting was also featured this past spring at the Superintendent's Art Award Breakfast. If Evelyn's parents are here, would you please stand? And her principal, Ms. Overby. And her, her art teacher, Ms. Guthrie. Thank you all for sharing this beautiful artist with us. Evelyn, congratulations. We're so proud of you. You're just lovely. Thank you. And our final recognition this evening is for Catherine Starling, a senior at Hoggett High School. Ms. Starling was awarded the Best in Show Prize for her artwork at the 2018 North Carolina State Fair in Raleigh, competing against students from across the state. The title of her piece is called Skull Still Life and it's referenced the composition of disparate objects she finds interesting. A skull, a mirror, paintbrush, can and chains. Is Ms. Starling here tonight?
Ms. Starling actually is best friends with one of my children.
Awesome.
Yeah, so that was actually conceived, I think, at my house.
Thank you so much, Ms. Eastab. Congratulations to, uh, Ms. Starling and Ms. Eastab for the inspiration and to Hoggett High School, okay. And that finally concludes our recognitions this evening. Thank you all.
All right, moving on to item number nine, administrative personnel.
There's none.
Okay, that was easy. Item number 10, Head Start Report from Liaison. Uh, I think we'll turn it over to Ms. Shannon Smiles.
So on a monthly basis for, uh, new board members, um, it's mandated by our federal government Head Start funding to share to our governing board on a monthly basis enrollment status and certain statistics for Head Start. So before you tonight, we have our Head Start Liaison Report available for, at your pleasure of reading. Um, we have 260 students enrolled. I would like to point that out and that's good news because that's what we're funded for. So, good job so far. Um, another thing that we need to take a peek at is to make sure that we meet, um, the requirement for special needs status and we're at 27, so good job there. I'd like to also highlight that this is November data. So, um, we're typically, um, a month behind. The top portion is required. The bottom portion is supplemental data and, um, program updates. So please just let me know if you have any questions. I'd be happy to help you. And next we have our monthly expenditure report. Again, is required to share to our governing board on a monthly basis. I would like to highlight that our fiscal year starts in May and ends in April. So it's not in alignment with your state budgets. So that's, um, makes it interesting. And at the bottom there, there's some highlighted, we'd like to see us being at 50%, which we are getting there. We have lots of things happening this month. And this ended October 31st, 2018. This is a summary report of your purpose and object codes. It's important to look at your bottom lines there so we see that most of our funding is towards salaries and fringe benefits. Please note, if I can help you have a better understanding, um, I always like to talk about preschool, so I would be happy to help.
I would just note for the board, we picked up Head Start, uh, five years ago when there were issues with, uh, the grant at that time. Ms. Smiles came on board and we, we've been renewed. And you serve not only as the school board, but you also serve as the Head Start Board. So it's sort of a secondary function as well. So this report you get every month is really a report to the Head Start Board, which is one of your functions as a board member.
Thank you, Dr. Markley. Um, and I will be bringing to you in January, our five-year non-competition grant. We're, uh, proud to share with you that we have not had any findings for the past five years and we're delivering excellent and high-quality services for our children in New Hanover County. So I look forward to sharing that information with you in January. And again, I, if I could be helpful, please just let me know. Thank you.
And please note, Head Start is different than pre-K. NC pre-K is one aspect of early childhood. Federal Head Start is a, is a different aspect.
It's a lot of fun.
So one of the committee appointments that, um, we will be having to make is, um, the Head Start Liaison. And so, um, you would be ably assisted by Ms. Smiles on that. So, um, I just wanted to, to note that, that, um, as you all are thinking of, of where you would like to serve on which committees, this is one of our more important ones and you would be making a, a, a report to the, uh, our presentation, um, every month to the board. Does anyone have any questions? This is all for information. Okay, moving on to the next item, information item. Uh, we've moved, um, item A, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Did we move item A?
Yes, we did.
Okay, all right. So moving on to item B, federal and state testing accountability models, appendix C to Dr. LaShawn Smith.
As she's coming up, please note, if you've been around education at all, you were here from the days of No Child Left Behind in the, uh, Bush era through on. And we are now in the latest iteration of that, which is ESSA. And it brings with it a whole different set of rules and regulations. So we have two accountability systems. We have the state system, which is the, uh, it used to be ABCs and you see it in school letter grades. And we have the federal accountability system. And while there are similarities, there are some very different pieces to each of those. And so we're going to highlight some of those differences, uh, tonight. I'll turn it over to Dr. Smith.
All right. I was going to say almost exactly what Dr. Markley just said, but just not as eloquently. So, um, our, our new reauthorization is, um, known as ESSA or ESSA. Um, and it stands for the Every Student Succeeds Act. And as Dr. Markley said, it is the latest reauthorization of the Elementary Secondary Act. And that goes all the way back to 1965. And what probably is most familiar to many people in the room is No Child Left Behind. And so as a result of this reauthorization, we have had a change in not only our state, but also our federal accountability program. And so we wanted to make sure that, um, all of our board members were, um, aware of the changes and the differences between the two. And then we also, um, wanted to take this as an opportunity to update, um, many of our parents who may not be aware of the shifts. Um, this evening, um, we have with us Karen Green. She is our Director of Testing and Student Accountability. And she's going to be walking you through, um, the shifts, um, in the accountability models. So I'll ask Ms. Green to come up. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Looking for the remote. I appreciate, while we're looking for the remote, I appreciate the opportunity to present our new accountability model. Apologize in advance if I cough. Thank you. Like Dr. Smith said, this is part of the, um, the new accountability model. It's called the Every Student Succeeds Act. So we're going to talk about our state model, which focuses on school performance grades. And then we're going to look at the federal model, which really is a model over time and, um, monitoring schools and student groups. So when we're looking at, I'm going to show you this graphic multiple times. So when we're looking at the accountability model and long-term goals, on the left side, we're really looking at our state model, where we have our school performance grades and our annual measures. And then on the right-hand side, under long-term goals, we're really looking at student and school progress over time. And that's really the new piece, um, for this model. So the essential questions we should, when we're looking at the accountability model, we're asking ourselves, are all schools progressing and are all student groups progressing? And then most importantly, the last essential question is what measures are we in North Carolina putting into place that will monitor the student progress over the long term? So we're going to look at, first of all, our state accountability model, our annual accountability model. Under ESSA, all states must develop some type of a system that will meaningfully differentiate schools and student progress. And so in North Carolina, our metric is the school performance grade. The school performance grade goes A to F, no pluses or minuses. It is on a 15-point scale through 2020. And in the previous accountability model, we've had school performance grades for each school and we've had school performance grades in grades three through eight for math and for English Language Arts. But we have not had school performance grades for student groups. And one of the long-term goals is to really make sure that we're reducing the gap among different student groups. So now we have school performance grades for student groups. So just a little bit about how school performance grades are So, just a little bit about how school performance grades are calculated. There are actually two measures that the state looks at. We look at proficiency, student proficiency, and student growth. In North Carolina, on the state assessments, those performance measures are designated in achievement levels. So, when a student receives their report on their assessment, they get an achievement level ranging from one to five. And the state has designated that achievement levels three through five are considered proficient. In other words, proficiency, did they meet that mark? Did they pass? Did they make that level of expectation? But then, the other measure is growth. You know, we have some students that may not make that mark every year, but we have to look to see if they're progressing. So, also in our school accountability model, in the school performance grade, we have growth. Are students making progress? And that's reported as either meeting growth expectations, exceeding, or not meeting. And in the school performance grade, if you'll note, 80% towards the school performance grade is the proficiency measure, and 20% is the growth measure. There had been a lot of discussion across the state about proposing that each would be equally designated on the, represented on the school performance grade, but that was not approved by the federal government. So, the accountability model, so how are school performance grades calculated? We talked about the 80 and the 20, but what measures, what assessments and what other indicators are included? So, for elementary and middle, you have your end-of-grade tests. You have your science in five and eight. You have the students that may participate in Math 1, in North Carolina, Math 1 in middle school counting towards the school performance grade. Then, in high school, you have your end-of-course test, but you also have other indicators, such as graduation rate, the ACT, work keys, math course rigor, and so, there are some other indicators at the high school level. 20% is growth, as I've said in the past, and for ELA, math and science in elementary and middle counts 20%. And then, growth for just English 2 and Math 1 in high school.
Karen, can you just explain what growth is?
So, growth answers the essential question, are students making progress? But the expectation is, for a year's worth of instruction, we have a year's worth of growth. And that's calculated, we outsource that to SAS, and it's calculated based on students' previous testing measures, and then, they have a prediction based on how they performed in the previous year, what they should score in the next year. So, under the old model, which was called READY, and the new model, we do have some similarities. We still are using school performance grades, and they're still based on 80% proficiency and 20% growth. And the grades are still calculated on a 15-point scale, and currently, that will be through the 1920 school year. And then, there are also participation rules, there are expectations for participation. We expect to test all children. That's the expectation. And there are sanctions if we do not meet that 95% mark.
Can I ask one question? Why? What is the reasoning for not doing it 50/50 instead of doing it 20? Because it seems like you're skewing the results.
Some of it's philosophical, but it's kind of like a check and balance system. So, when you look at, you can't just look at student proficiency. You have to look at student progress, too. And so, we feel philosophically, a lot of districts across the state feel like student progress is just as important as them meeting the mark, because we have some students that need to move further to make the mark, but they, schools feel like they need to get credit for students making progress. But that was not, that was not approved.
It just seems like some of the schools, you're going to skew the numbers at schools of students that are farther behind and maybe aren't able to meet the proficiency, but show growth.
And that's why when you're looking at school performance grades, when you're looking at that one grade for the school, that doesn't define the school. You know, there are other things, you know, within that, school culture, you know, parent involvement.
It does, because the general public is going to look at a school and see a grade, and they're going to think, oh, but then they're not going to understand the fact that you have.
Right, there's more to the story. So, the letter grade does start the discussion. So, when you have a school that may not be, have the higher, you know, school performance grade, then you want to take a look at the growth, too, because you want to ask yourself, you know, maybe they didn't make the mark, but are the students progressing?
You said that it wasn't approved by the federal government? The 20%, 80, 50/50? So, it wasn't coming from the state, it was coming from the federal standard? Is this a consistent 80/20 across the nation, or is it?
Lots of, lots of states are using the school performance grade model. I can't speak to what every state is doing and what they're, what measures they're using to calculate in their school performance grades, because some states are using things like student surveys, but I could certainly get some more information if the board would like that.
Every state had to submit a plan to the federal government, and each one was, was different. Some use national standardized tests like NWEA and others. North Carolina develops its own test. So, each state's going to, no two states are going to look alike in terms of what that, what that looks like. Is that right, Sharon?
Thank you, Dr. Markley. So, just some differences in the old model and the new model. Under the old model, there were no membership rules for proficiency counting in the school performance grade. That means if a child moved out of state, from out of state, and came to the school two weeks before we started testing, of course, we have to test all of our children, but that assessment score counted in the school performance grade under the old model. And that really wasn't fair, because our teachers didn't have a chance to work with that child on the curriculum standards. Under the new model, the child has to be in membership half of the school year, so that's a good thing. For growth calculations, students had to be enrolled 70 out of 90 days on a block or 140 out of 180 to count for their growth to count in the school performance grade. Under the new model, students must be enrolled half the school year. So, really, we have more children counting in growth now. School performance grades under the old model were reported for schools, and then, in grades three through eight for English Language Arts and Math. Now, the new feature is we have school performance grades for student groups. Now, not all schools will have a student performance grade for every student group, because you have to have 30 assessments in that group in order to have a grade. Not 30 students, but 30 assessments, because for that school performance grade, they combine all the assessments, the number of assessments. So, we have to have 30.
Now, what that means is, when it says 30 assessments, that's 30 assessments in grades three through whatever that school is. It's not 30 third graders, 30 fourth graders.
Thank you.
As long as you've got 30 students between those two, that's their number they're looking at.
So, if I had a fifth grade with 10 students, and let's just say, that student's score really counts, each student's score really counts three times, because there's a student's score for math, a student's score for reading, and a student's score for science. So, when you're looking at school performance grades for student groups, you really have to look at the number of assessments in those tested grades.
And Karen, the state will still report out the whole school group as their school performance grade, correct?
Yes, yes. So, the access test, we've been given the access test for English as a second language students for a number of years, because we're federally required to monitor their English language acquisition. But under the old accountability model, those access scores did not factor into the school performance grade, but now, they may factor into the school performance grade. And I say may, because you have to have 30 students testing, for example, on the access test in grades three through five at elementary, at grades six through eight in middle, and then also just in grade 10 at high school. Grade 10 is the marker for the access assessment. So, we only had three or four schools that actually, the access score calculated into the school performance grade because of their large numbers. So, under the old model, if a student was enrolled in grade eight, they had to take the end-of-grade eight math test, but they were actually enrolled in the North Carolina Math 1 high school course. Under the old model, they had to take both the grade eight math assessment and the NC Math 1 assessment. Under the new model, students enrolled in grade eight that are enrolled in NC Math 1 only have to take one assessment. And that's the higher assessment, and that's a good thing. Under the old model, first-year English Language, English as a Second Language students didn't have to participate in any of the English Language Arts tests. They were exempt from it. Under this new model, they do have to participate. It does not count towards the school's proficiency, but we're using this as an opportunity to get some baseline data for the student. The other good thing about this is, under the old model, that second year, the children had to take the test, and it counted towards the school's proficiency and growth. Under the new model, the student, the school has three years before the students' scores count for proficiency in that school performance grade. So, they're allowing children time, additional time to acquire the language. And then, math course rigor is reported for graduates. Math course rigor is the percent of students that successfully complete NC Math 3, but now, we're reporting it out as all students who are enrolled in grade 12. Sometimes, you may see a dip in that measure, because we have a lot of students that may remain in grade 12 for more than one year, and we have a lot of students that may take more than four years to graduate. So, that's a little bit different under the new accountability model. So, looking at the long-term goals, we just finished talking about the ESSA accountability model, which is our annual model that focuses on school performance grades. Now, the new part of this graphic really is the long-term goals, and that's really new to the accountability model. Because what the federal government is expecting is that all schools are going to progress, and that all student groups are going to progress, and we're going to reduce the achievement gap amongst student groups. And they've designed a model over a 10-year time period for us to do that. So, the last essential question for this long-term goal is, what support and improvement structures have we put in place in North Carolina to ensure student and school progress over the long term? So, we have put, we have some support and improvement designations. So, we have, we'll have some schools identified that may need some additional assistance as comprehensive support and improvement schools, and that's really looking at the school as a whole, the overall school progress. Then, we have another designation that's called targeted support and improvement, which really focuses on different student groups and their progress. I'm going to try to unpack this for you. So, we're going to talk about the whole school performance, first of all, and there are two measures, there are two designations that we're going to look at. Low-performing Title I schools, and I'll further define them on subsequent slides. And then, low four-year cohort graduation rate, because if you'll recall, the expectation is that we graduate all children in four years. Then, when you look at student group performance, there are two additional designations, consistently underperforming student groups in particular schools, and then, an additional targeted support for schools with struggling student groups. So, to identify the schools that are not progressing, whole school performance, how they calculate which schools are designated as low performing, they take the numerical value of the school performance grade for all the Title I schools in North Carolina, and you have, and you stack them in order from the lowest to the highest school performance grade numerical value, and that lowest 5% of those, they draw the line, and that is considered your designation for the low performing. This year, when you looked at the numerical value for that lowest 5%, the numerical value for the school performance grade was 37. So, that becomes our mark now. The cut was 37. So, and the lowest 5% of the Title I schools that had below 37 were designated. And then, the second whole school performance designation is low graduation rate, because, you know, we want to make sure children are successful and graduate on time, so they are career and/or college-ready. And so, a graduation rate below 66.7% is considered low graduation rate designation. And so, that was whole, whole school designations. Now, we're going to unpack student group progress designations. There's one designation entitled consistently underperforming student groups. They're identified annually. This year, because we only have one year of data, the 2017, 18 year, we just have a watch list. There are no sanctions for students, for schools this year that have school performance grades for student groups that are below 40. They're just on the watch list for one more year. And then, in North Carolina, we have an additional targeted support for student groups. If we have schools that have student groups with a school performance numerical value of 37 or below, then they're conditioned, considered additional targeted support. And again, the 37 came from that bottom 5% of Title I. So, every three years, that number may change. These are new designations that are very complex and involve, you know, federal programs and some additional funding sources from the Office of Federal Programs Directors across the state.
Karen, refresh, when we had no schools that would have been CIS, correct, at the elementary level?
We have no, we have no schools that were identified as low performing, no.
And none of our traditional high schools, obviously, were below the 66%?
No. One of our alternative schools were, but it was because there's been a switch in the focus of that school. So, when you look at cohort graduation rate, you're looking at four years' worth of students and four years' worth of cohort. But in the past four years, the focus of Mosley has changed, and so, they have a more stable enrollment, and so, we anticipate that to change this year.
Middle school, what did we say?
We had no elementary or middle schools, school-wide identifiable.
And so, Mosley was identified, but because of the.
Graduation rate.
Yes.
But that will, that will, that's your change.
And we believe that's going to resolve itself because of the programming change.
And they graduate such small numbers, one or two students there can make a huge difference in that number.
Yes, yes. Usually, it's around 24 students or less that we graduate.
You kind of answered my, in the last thing you just said, but I was going to ask. Obviously, you're going to come up with a number at the schools or letter grade. How does, how does that translate into getting additional funds that are available through state or federal or that?
So, right now, and Dr. Jackie Jethro can speak more to this, but I know right now, in terms of funding, there has been a one-time allotment for the schools that have been identified as additional targeted support, meaning those schools that had student groups that had a numerical value for their school performance grade of 37 or less, those schools are going to receive a one-time additional funding, and part of it will be to fund some additional professional development. But then, also, there's a web-based school improvement system that we use for our low-performing schools that we will be able to offer across the state for those additional targeted And so, to the exit criteria, how do you get out of these designations? So, for the low-performing Title I schools, and again, we did not have any, schools will have to meet the progress goals, the interim progress goals for the all-student group in English Language Arts and Math. And what that really means is, remember, for long-term goals, we're trying to reduce the gap over a 10-year period. So, based on how students' groups did in each school during the 2015, 16 school year, that was their baseline. And so, now, every year, they have to meet that goal. And then, their school performance numerical value has to be higher than the lowest of the five, the higher of the 5% of the Title I schools. So, in this case, this year, it would have been a 37. And then, the low graduation rate high schools, they just have to increase their graduation rate above 66.7 in the current year and then, the previous year. Now, for student group performance, student group performance, the consistently underperforming student groups, they will have to increase their school performance grade above an F. It will have to be a D or better in order to lose that designation of consistently underperforming student groups. For the additional targeted support, because if you'll recall, this, this year, those schools across the state that are identified, their numerical value is a 37, which is lower than a 40. And so, this is where the additional funding, one-time funding comes in for them. And in order to get out of that designation, they will have to show a growth index of one or higher for that student group. And also, or meet the interim progress goals. So, it's an either/or. So, if they meet the interim progress goals for the. So if they meet the interim progress goals for those student groups, that ten-year plan, then they will not be considered additional targeted support anymore. So it's really complex. But it really, this whole model really just answers two essential questions. Are schools progressing, and are all of our student groups progressing? And the federal expectation is that, that we close the achievement gap over two years. In, in North Carolina, we've had these designations in order to provide additional support to the schools that may need assistance.
You said that the, the whole school performance, none of our schools are performing thirty-seven percent below?
The Title I, the low performing Title I schools, yes ma'am, that's correct.
Now, the student group performance, has any of them been identified as being low performing according to?
We do have some student groups that are on the watch list.
Which ones are, or do you have?
Across the state, there were one thousand seven hundred forty-one schools in North Carolina that had students, that, that had an F for a, a school performance grade for a student group. In our district, we are on the watch list for our Students with Disabilities group, our Economically Disadvantaged group, our English as a Second Language group.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
So the targeted support, I'm assuming that like the PD would be targeted specifically for
Working with students, yes.
Right, for those teachers?
Yes.
Working with those groups?
Yes.
Okay.
And, you know, the accountability model, even under the old model, you know, we've always been under this notion that we want to try to reduce the achievement gap amongst student groups. But now we have the additional designations of school performance grades for those student groups, and so now, we have these different designations to provide the additional support to really make that happen under this model.
Well, I mean, we're still federally underfunded for EC, so, you know, we're mandated to do X, and we're given forty percent of the funding to do that. So it would be nice to, it's nice to get the PD, but it would also be nice to get the positions for it. But I guess you take what you can get.
Yes, ma'am. Are there any other questions?
Sorry, that was an aside.
Thank you for the opportunity to present our new accountability model.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, item number twelve, Superintendent's Report.
None tonight.
Okay, moving on to item number thirteen. Personnel, Appendix D, Dr. Wellmers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Would request that the board approve the personnel matters as presented. These matters were, these folks have been interviewed and processed through the, the normal hiring process that we use, and we are recommending them for employment tonight.
Can I ask a question? These are, I'm not used to the normal numbers. Is this the average or the regular for this time of year, this month?
Yes, ma'am, pretty much it is. We, we had some changes in numbers when we went through Florence, and the beginning of the school year, that, that fluctuated, but we're kind of getting back to normal now. Yes, ma'am.
District, we've got almost four thousand employees, full and part-time. So with that number, you're going to see some turnover. There are some hard-to-staff areas, special ed, that is one you'll always see coming through here, and then some of our classified positions, some of those tend to turn over as well.
And Dr. Wellmers, I see you've hired some bus drivers.
We have, yes, ma'am, we have. And we're about to, we are searching right now for our third TA bus driver, and think we'll have someone to recommend at the next board meeting.
Very good, thank you.
So do I hear a motion to approve? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any other questions? Comments? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is approved. Thank you, Dr. Wellmers. Item B, Budget Amendment Number Four, Appendix E, Mary Hazel Small.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I request the board's approval of the amendment as presented, and would be glad to answer the questions you have.
I will ask for a, a motion to approve.
May for approval.
Second?
Second, okay.
I do have a question. Ms. Small, would you mind explaining the, just for our newer members, what the restart budget is, just kind of an overall view of, you and, you and I spoke about it, but I just thought it'd be nice to, for them to understand kind of what that's all about.
Yes, ma'am, that's a, a new process this year. Two of our schools have been, have gone through the application approval process to be restarts to schools, which is Snipes and Freeman. And with that, the state treats their funding somewhat like a charter school, in which the, the state per pupil amount for the non, I guess, separate-count EC students is, we have to transfer that from whichever state programs we choose into a separate open chart program where all that, all their money is managed. That doesn't preclude us from paying additional amounts outside of, of, of that program, at a state, federal, or local, for the support of the schools, because, because both of those schools, we spend much more than the state per pupil amount on those students. So we are just, because of the hurricane, the, the restart budget process was delayed. They just opened up that transfer window last week, so we're doing this a little later than we would in a normal year, and I'll be meeting with both the principals to discuss, you know, how this affects them and their flexibility and funding on Friday.
Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of item B? All those opposed? The budget amendment is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Small. Item number fourteen, Old Business?
None is, none tonight.
Okay. Item number fifteen, New Business. Item A, Disposal of Surplus Property, Mary Hazel Small, Appendix F.
Thank you. I request the board's approval to dispose of surplus property no longer necessary or desirable for public school purposes in accordance with public school law.
Do I hear a motion? I heard a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, any questions, comments?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I noticed how many computers, I guess they're the desktop auto models, were on there. Is there any program locally where they refurbish those and place them in student, students' homes that don't have them? I'm just asking. I've worked in districts before they did do that.
The state of most of these computers, and Mr. Reidenbach can give you a little more detail over there from, is they're, they're in pretty bad shape when we're surplusing them. You want to talk, give us a sort of overview?
Yeah, typically, the, the computers that come up for, for surplus are either deemed unrepairable or not functional for our purposes in the school. They go to a pretty rigorous, we, we try to repair everything we can. At some point, we just can't keep it going. So that's pretty much the state of those machines.
We actually have a hard time moving these. We try, we, we put them in bulk, and they don't get a whole lot of bids on, on the bulk part. The average age of our computers right now are, are six years old.
Yes, we, we try to go through a cyclical process of refreshment every so many years, and they, they go through a lot of use in the schools. So by the time they go to surplus, like Dr. Markley says, it's, we, we can't even, we can, we can't even give them away hardly at surplus.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion is approved. Moving on to item number B, Building and Contents Coverage Renewal, Appendix G, Wayne Bullard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is the annual renewal of our Building and Contents Coverage with DPI. As you can see, the premium, the annual premium is five hundred and seventy-two thousand six hundred and ninety-six dollars. We have been with DPI for many years for this type of coverage. As was discussed previously, there is an issue with respect to whether DPI's coverage is adequate in light of the damages that we experienced in Hurricane Florence. So we will be looking at some private insurance companies to give us some competing bids, but we didn't have time to do that before the renewal. So my recommendation is that you renew this, and, and we will bring back to you at the appropriate time, some competing bids, so the board can compare the coverage and determine whether or not this coverage is adequate, or whether we need to get some coverage that might provide a little bit more help to us in responding to the water damage that we experienced in Hurricane Florence.
I have a couple of questions. Specifically, what's the nature of the satisfaction? Have they denied claims? Were the adjusters slow in getting out?
Historically, we've had no problem with them. Hurricane Florence kind of changed everything because of the scope of the damage. They've not formally denied any of our claims, but they have told us verbally, they have come down, had sent adjusters and experts that have looked at our schools and looked at our roofs, and have told us verbally that much of our claim is going to be denied because of language in the policy that says that there needs to be physical damage to the roof that lets the water in before they will cover the claim. If the water comes in and around flashing or through a pre-existing leak, they're saying they are not going to cover the claim. And so that is something we're going to take a look at and see if, we're, we're going to challenge them if we don't agree with their assessment, and we're going to take a look at whether or not we need to switch to another, an actual private insurance company to try to cover that potential gap in coverage. DPI ensures most of the school boards in the state for building and contents, and most of the other school boards that were affected by the hurricane are having the same issues with DPI. And it's going to be something we'll have to take a look at in terms of the cost of a private policy versus the cost of DPI's policy. I think we're going to find that DPI's policy is substantially less expensive than private insurance, but we're finding out it's cover, it doesn't cover as much as private insurance would cover.
And would those be, would those bids be solicited in conjunction with the other counties who have been affected or are having the same problem, or would we do that independently?
We'll probably do it on our own, although I think Dr. Markley has had some discussions in the regional superintendent's meeting about seeing if we can bundle the bids together and, and get an insurance company to give us a, sort of a group rate. But we're in the beginning stages of having those discussions with the other counties.
And do they handle our liability too, or would this just be for building?
This is only building and contents here currently insured for liability through a private insurance company called Liberty Mutual.
Thank you.
Mr. Bullard, isn't this ultimately deciding who's going to pay for it, the state versus federal? If DPI denies it, then our next recourse would be FEMA?
Yes, we are going to make a claim against DPI for the damages, for all of our damages, and anything that DPI doesn't pay, we will be including in our claim to FEMA. Yes, sir.
So, Madam Chair, I note for approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? I do have one question. Is there any possibility of getting some sort of rider to this coverage? Because we will be going through another hurricane season before we can get to do a, you know, excuse me, before the next renewal date.
I don't think DPI offers the rider, but I've never specifically asked them that, and I will do so, and if they do, I'll let you know what their, what the cost would be.
Okay.
And then it would be your option rather to add that, yes.
Okay, all right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. Moving on to item number C, two thousand eighteen, nineteen School Improvement Plan, Executive Summaries, Appendix H, Dr. Smith.
Yes, thank you. Schools are required by general statute to develop school improvement plans bi-annually. We bring before the board the school executive plan every year for your review and approval. The school exec, executive summary is known as the Instructional Improvement Plan for Schools, and for the most part, what it does is operationalizes the school improvement plan. It categorizes those high-yield practices that schools have identified for their teachers and their students, and for areas being community building, content planning, instruction, and assessment for learning. Schools, the majority of our schools use our traditional template, but we also do have some schools, and you'll hear some more information about that a little bit later tonight, the NC STAR system. But we do bring you the executive summary in such a way that we make clear what the focus in the party is for the schools related to school improvement.
All right. Do I hear a move for approval on item number C?
Let me.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments for Dr. Smith? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion, item number C is approved. Moving on to item number D, two thousand nineteen, twenty Curriculum Course Guide, Appendix I, Dr. Smith.
Yes, I am bringing before the board for your approval the Curriculum Course Guide for the two thousand eighteen, excuse me, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year. In here, you will see the major additions and deletions. I can go through the handout, and if we can bring that up, I'll just review some of those major changes. In terms of additions, we have information added, language about advanced courses. Now, as a requirement of House Bill nine eighty-six, students who score Level Five on any integrated assessment course for mathematics are required to be enrolled in the next level advanced course unless we hear from the parent that they do not want their child to be enrolled in that course. Also, we've got information here in our bulletin that updates our partnership with the Watson School of Education in regards to the Future Teachers Career Academy at Isaac Bear Early College High School. We've added some additional language around the difference between credit recovery and repeating a course for credit. We have made some changes to better highlight our signature programs. Each of our signature programs in high schools that offer some specialty programs have their own separate page in the Curriculum Course Guide where they are touting what's specific to their school and available to, to students across the district who apply and are accepted to their school. Additionally, we have added additional courses. We've listed those courses as to whether they're CTE or, well, I'll go through the additional courses. So we've added additional courses in CTE, Pro Start One, Pro Start Two, Project Management One, which is specifically at CTEC, Health Sciences Two, Honors Marketing, Project Lead the Way, Civil, Civil Engineering and Architect, which is specifically at Laney High School. We've added some additional world languages courses to support our students at Gregory, who will be transitioning to high school. We've added Honor Spanish One for heritage speakers, and then we're also, let's see. Actually, no, this is just Honor Spanish One for, for heritage speakers. It's not specific to our emerging students, my apologies. And then Honor Spanish Two for heritage speakers. And I think the last course is a course specific to Laney, excuse me, to Haggard High School, Student Support MTSS. It's a locally-designed course that is being called Quest. Also, in your packet of information, you've got the standards that are associated with each of these courses, and a course description, and then we've also listed, listed the courses that have been deleted as well. We do have representatives from, I think, each of our high schools if there are any specific questions about any specific course, but we're glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Can you talk a little bit about the pre-LICEM program at Hanover?
Yes. Dr. Morgan? I'll ask Dr. Morgan to come to the microphone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome, new board members. I'm Rob Morgan, I'm the principal at Hanover High School. What can I answer?
What, how, what are we doing with the pre-LICEM? I know one of the issues we had talked about previously was diabetes program at Haggard. They kind of had a leg up because They kind of had a leg up because they had the pre-IV program.
Yes, sir.
So, what have you all done at New Hanover to kind of start a pre-lycium?
So, currently this year, we've got a pre-lycium course options for ninth and 10th grade students. The ninth grade is a year-long partnership with social studies teacher and an English teacher, and in 10th grade, there's a partnership year-long as well with a math teacher and an English teacher. The reason for the difference is based on the experience we've had with students coming into the lycium and some of their needs for getting that additional math out of the way prior to their junior year. So, right now, I'd say generalized, general numbers, we're talking about 40 students between the two. Our hope, of course, is that as they're entering, if they're showing an interest in lycium in ninth grade, that that will continue to build as they move through 10th grade and into junior year. There are no expectations for those students to, you know, they won't be held to any requirement that they go into lycium. Our only interest really is sort of introducing them to some of the things that they do in lycium a little bit earlier. That was something that parents had asked for, some of the students had asked for as well, and so we were happy to be able to provide it this year. So, things seem to be going really well. I don't see any, I don't see any reason why we would stop doing it in the years ahead. Or I'll speak one year at a time. Next year, I think we'll continue to do it.
Thank you.
Sure. Anything else?
And I'd like to add a correction, and I do apologize. The Honor Spanish 1 for heritage speakers does speak specifically to immersion students. So, this is the course offered, available at all of our high schools, but specifically, we've made some modifications to, for New Hanover to accommodate those students who are coming through Gregory, who will be entering ninth grade at New Hanover High School as a part of the continuation of our immersion program. So, I do apologize for that incorrect information.
So, there will be certain standards to be able to enter that, those classes, correct?
Yes.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. You'll have to have, you'll have to have the pre-ROPS sort of coming through Gregory?
So, yes, they, they will need to either be heritage speakers specifically designed or have that immersion background, yes.
I have one more question, and this might be for Dr. Morgan again. Sorry. The allocation of teachers at the Hanover this year? I know in the past, there have not been as many foreign language teachers at the Hanover as opposed to the other high schools. Have we, did we change that up at all this year, or are we kind of, what's?
Well, we've been able to adjust. This past year, we were able to adjust. I think that's been part of the conversation in terms of moving forward with, I'll say it's been my part, part of my conversation, in terms of moving forward and trying to figure out if we bring these students in and we're offering a specific course or set courses for them so that we can sort of extend their immersion experience, what's that going to look like in terms of the teacher allotment? You know, I'm certainly hopeful that in bringing that in, we'll have the opportunity to do that without, you know, cutting anything, anything away. I know that those, the teachers that we have in place are really excited about it and the possibility of bringing those kids in. I'm excited to be able to talk to parents about our plans for the future. Sent out a letter just yesterday letting the parents of the, parents of students who are currently in the eighth grade immersion program at Gregory, we're going to have a meeting for them at New Hanover January 17th in the library. You're all welcome to come if you'd like to hear, but we're looking forward, just to be able to sort of share with them our vision for what we hope we will provide for them when they come into high school.
And speaking specifically at foreign language, having the transition occur at New Hanover High School will actually allow us to bring Mandarin to New Hanover as well. So, that will be available not only to the students who are in the immersion program currently, but also other students at New Hanover High School. So, we're really excited about that.
And that'll be a first for us, so that is exciting.
Can I ask how many students are planning to be at New Hanover next year that are in the immersion program at this point? How many are the numbers?
I believe the number is 18 right now.
Okay. And the Mandarin program, that is a new program that?
We currently offer Mandarin at both Gregory and Williston. The teacher teachers, and one teacher of both places. So, some of those Williston students coming over to the high school will also have, be able to access Mandarin too. This will be the first time we've offered Mandarin as a high school course.
So, it's not the same as the Spanish immersion? That was a course that is offered to, separately to the students at Gregory and Williston?
Correct. At Gregory, those parents, when we were building the middle school program, had asked specifically about adding another language for their students to access, and so we added Mandarin two years ago.
Yes, this is our third year.
And so, we also opened up sections at Williston to students who are interested in Mandarin since that literally they can go across the catwalk to, between the two buildings. And so, this is just simply the next extension of that moving up. There'll be more coming along because the current eighth grade at Gregory was that very first immersion class back at Forest Hills, and they only started it with one class. Now, we've got, for example, we've got, on average, four kindergarten classes every year. So, that will increase as those larger groups come up through that program.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
I'll take my leave.
I wanted to ask, Dr. Smith, in, you mentioned the Future Teacher Academy at Isaac Bear, and we're certainly divided about that. But looking through the guide, I noticed you're still offering teacher cadet classes, and you meant, it shows which high schools do certain courses, but that one seemed to be generic. Are we teaching having that offered at all of the high schools?
So, it is still available at all of our high schools. Now, that doesn't mean that students are enrolling every semester, but it is still available. I don't know if any of our high school principals want to speak to their enrollment numbers?
Laney typically has the largest enrollment when it comes to the teacher cadet program.
Yes.
And that was a program that started many years ago, was part of an NEA program, and then, but we've continued past that. The program at Isaac Bear is very different. The goal there is to identify students who want to be teachers, start them early on that college program so that we can get those teachers into our schools. And basically, if they come out of that program at Isaac Bear and go straight into teaching, we'll hire them into our schools immediately. It's a good quality program. It gets them a jumpstart in that teaching career by a year to two years early.
So, my thinking is if you don't have enough students at the high school level, if you have a high schools that are interested, those are the students that we need to start recruiting for that program.
Yes.
So, the counselors could help us with that, or help the students with the information. They may not be aware of what's offered at Isaac Bear and how to.
Yeah, because that program's, that program's really only, only in its second year over that.
And where, the numbers are, what?
It's limited right now by space. You're talking about a max of 20 students.
Yeah.
Thank you. Your book.
All right. Any other questions or discussion? If not, I would ask for approval of item number E.
So moved.
I'm sorry. Correction, item number D.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The item is approved. Now, moving on to item number E, 2019-20 New Hanover County Schools Calendars, Appendix J. Dr. LaShawn Smith?
Yes. So, last month, I brought before the board revised calendars for the current school year, and tonight, I'm bringing before the board the calendars for the 2019-2020 school year. Just a little background information for those who might not be aware, the district has nine calendars to meet the different options that are available to families. This work is done in committee, and on our calendar committee, we have representation from various groups. We have parents that are a part of the committee, we have members from the NCAE, we have administrators, and we have central office staff. We include folks from finance, transportation, human resources, so that we can get all of their perspectives when developing these calendars. We also will take any comments or emails that we get from folks and kind of hold on to those and review those as a part of our calendar committee meetings as well. The first calendar that I would like to review with you is the Traditional School Calendar, and I'm going to go through some of the requirements of the current calendar law for this calendar, and they actually all apply to all the other calendars as well, except for the beginning and end dates. The start date for the calendar can be no earlier than Monday, than the Monday closest to August 26th, and the end date, no later than Friday closest to June 11th. That's why maybe sometimes in the past, you've seen calendars that have a lot of teacher workdays on the front end, a lot of teacher workdays on the back end, but none in the middle of the calendar, and that's driven by calendar law. We're very fortunate this year, well, the 1920 calendar year, that the dates fall in such a way that we actually can extend our calendar and embed some of those teacher workdays during the year for, for the benefit of our teachers and our children. As I said, the start and end dates apply only to the traditional calendar. They do not require, do not apply to the year-round calendar, or the early college calendars, or the restart calendars. Calendar here is required to cover at least nine months, and we do. The calendar has to provide at least 185 days for instruction, or 1,025 hours of instruction. And most often, for us as a district, especially with the dates falling where they do, we most often go with the 1,025 instructional hours. In the traditional calendar, I want to say actually covers about 1,086 instructional hours, and it includes 181 instructional days. We also provide teachers with at least nine teacher workdays, which is a calendar law requirement. Specific to this calendar, teachers have 13 teacher workdays. Seven are designated, excuse, yes, seven are designated, six are undesignated, to meet the requirement of at least two days for which teachers may take leave. Teachers may take leave on any of those undesigned days unless they've been designated specifically by their school principal. And we provide teachers with a minimum of 10 vacation days. And teachers have the same legal number of holidays as those designated by the State Personnel Commission for state employees. So, that's the guidance that's provided to districts that we have to adhere to when creating our calendars. The next calendar that I'd like to review is the Year- Round Calendar. As I said earlier, it adheres to all the requirements except for the beginning and ending start dates. And we work with the year-long, the principals specifically of year-round schools to align their teacher workdays as much as we can with the traditional calendar so that we can have those shared training dates for teachers. Following the Year- Round Calendar, I'd like to share with you the Pre-K Calendar. The Pre-K Calendar is followed primarily by our Pre-K Centers, but it also indicates home visit dates and staggered enrollment dates for our Pre-K classrooms that are in our traditional elementaries as well. Followed by the Pre-K calendars, we have three calendars specific to our early colleges. We have a calendar for Isaac Bear, we have a calendar for WEX, and we have a calendar for CTEC. These calendars, again, are not bound by the end and start dates, and they do, in most cases, try to adhere to the Institute of Higher Education for which they're partnered. So, WEX and CTEC try to align as much as reasonable to Cape Fear Community College, and Isaac Bear will align its calendar somewhat to UNCW. And then following that, we have Restart Calendar, and that's specific to Snipes and Freeman only. And then we also have the Restart Pre-K Calendar because Freeman has Pre-K classrooms at its school. And again, what's most unique about these calendars is that we have built-in professional development days for these schools. And then our last calendar is the calendar for Lake Forest Academy. What is unique in this calendar is that students receive 15 additional days of instruction, and they also receive day treatment services year-round. Teachers with this specific calendar are employed for 230 days, whereas in all other calendars, teachers are employed for 215. I'd ask the board's approval of our calendars for the 2019-2020 school year, and am glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Dr. Markley, this may be a question for you. I understand that calendar flexibility may be on the, again, on the agenda for the legislature. What would, if something were to happen within the next six months, would we have the ability to adjust our calendars accordingly?
Yes. We would, we could come back if they do something in a short session, particularly if it's at the front end as opposed to, and you know, with a legislative session, when you get into the long sessions, those can run all the way and well past the July deadline for most of them. So, if they can do it prior to March, April timeframe, because after that, then you've got folks who are starting to make plans based on the calendar. So, there's outside things we can make an adjustment.
Any other discussion questions? If not, move for approval of item number E.
Submit.
Second? Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item is approved.
All right, thank you.
Item number F, 2018-19 Low Performing School Plans, Appendix K. Dr. Smith?
Yes. North Carolina low-performing schools are required to use the NC STAR tool for their school improvement planning, and these schools begin with 12 key indicators of student success, and then these schools are allowed flexibility to design strategies and work specific to how they're going to achieve their, achieve these indicators of success within their school. Earlier today, you had heard the presentation from Ms. Karen Green, and it spoke to the fact that we don't have any comprehensive needs assessment schools designated through our School About Accountability Program, but the state of North Carolina actually has another definition for low-performing schools. And so, we do have five schools that are designated as low-performing in our district. All of these schools met their growth expectations for this year, but because their overall composite score, our school performance score, is a D or lower, and none of our schools are lower than a D, and they did not exceed growth, that is why they hold this designation. Two years ago, the definition was that schools would have not met growth expectations to hold this designation, but unfortunately, the state changed the definition, and that's why we have these schools designated as such. I know it can get a little confusing, sometimes we get a little confused by it, but as a part of this requirement with the state, we have to bring before the board the specific improvement plans of these schools. And last month, I brought those to you for your review. We then make them publicly available, so we made them available on our district website, and we solicited feedback from the public. The feedback that we received is very limited. Specifically, there was a call for additional early childhood classrooms at Freeman. That was primarily the feedback that we received. So, what I'm doing is bringing you back these plans for your final review and approval, and then we will submit them to the Department of Public Instruction for them to review, and then for them to submit for final approval to the State Board of Education. And this is what is required in general statute. I know we've got a few of our principals that are still here with us this evening. Should you have any questions specific to their plans?
Are the comments also, any comments, are they also turned over?
I'm sorry.
Are the comments also turned over to the state?
So, yes, the, with, one of the unique features of the NC STAR system is the accessibility. So, each school has a password, and they have someone who enters that information, but there is also a guest password, so any person can go into the system and see what the progress the schools are making. And schools do make this available on their websites. So, the comments are made available to the state as well.
And the individual schools, you have the principal that meets with? And the individual schools, you have the principal that meets with teachers to develop this plan?
Yes. So this, in essence, is their school improvement team. And it's a lot more comprehensive than we see at many of our other schools. And again, I want to say there are a hundred and twelve indicators in total. But they start with these twelve primary ones and then build out.
And so then are there, are there targets? Like, I see that there, you know, are, are completion percentages. But then are there target performance measures that, that also go to the state? Or just the, the completion percentages?
So I'm, I'm not completely clear about your question. So essentially, they've got, their, their plans are re, are reviewed and they're given feedback. But ultimately, the measure is in, in their, their end-of-grade outcomes.
Okay. So there's not like interim measures, there's just the end of grade?
Yes.
And that's it, okay. Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right, if not, I will ask for a approval of item number F. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye? Any opposed? The item is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. I'm sure your voice is suffering. Moving on to item number G, Beginning Teachers of the Year Support Plan, Dr. Wellmers.
Thank you, Mr. Scher. Would ask the board to approve this plan. Beginning Teacher Support Program is kind of just like it sounds. Since the nineteen eighties, New Hanover has had a program that's aimed at taking novice teachers with first, the teachers within the first three years that they're employed with it, and giving them support. The impetus in the country became a lot more prevalent in the two thousands when it was determined that the majority of turnover in most school systems between, was happening between teachers of three to five years of experience. So what we've done is we've worked on this program for many years. There's not a lot of changes in the program representing the nineteen-one from last year. The main change being that the state changed licensure, name, you might say, from SP one, which was standard professional one licenses, that's within the first three years we employed, to initial license, which makes kind of more sense to me. And then SP twos was changed to continuing. So in the first three years a teacher joins us, if they meet the things we request them to do in this process, they then can earn a continuing license. Not to be, not to be confused with a continuing contract, but a continuing license. Sorry, there you go. Didn't have my green light on. It's late, and I forgot the green light, I'm sorry. Basically, this is a support program that's funded through Title II funds, which are federal flow-through funds that come through the state to us to help in the recruitment, the support, and the retention of teachers. And we know that the more we can give support to our beginning teachers, the better they become as teachers and the more we retain. Our loss of those teachers right now is around ten to eleven percent per year. And if you check across other large systems, we, we do a lot better. The program is also being copied by a lot of systems. We received an audit about four years ago, we've got another one coming up, and it was considered a distinguished program. And that's because a lot of the good work of, of Robin Myers, Andrea Rains, and, and Marcia Merkel in our office, and, and then working closely with LaShawn's instructional folks on PD. And we've seen a lot of success for that, and we get a lot of success back from those teachers. And we think we create a lot better teachers. The program emphasizes mentors in the schools. We use veteran teachers who are accomplished in their own right. We pay them a hundred dollars a month to mentor those teachers. And the principals have been very supportive, oftentimes also providing a, what you might call a buddy teacher to help the teacher with those things you need to do in the school every day, where you park, when you go outside, things like that. And then the mentor teacher to help in, in actually looking at what goes on in the classroom and being that voice and that ear to help that teacher because it is a stressful, difficult job and task, especially in that first year. And they provide that, that service. They have to pass that program, they then get to their third year. They have to admit thirty hours or three CEUs of credits that they've met. And then we make a determination in that third year as to whether we want to recommend them for that continuing license. So at the end of this year, I'll bring you a long list of teachers who are the folks we're recommending for that continuing license. Once they receive that license, the state renews their license every five years while they have to meet the new CEUs that are required of all teachers. So it's, it's a good process. The evaluation process is not always the strongest, the state's gone through several systems. But this is a very strong program. And that's the main changes of this year was just the nomenclature of the licensure. But the program itself is a very strong one, and we think will continue. We're improving it each year, and, and I think really benefits our teachers.
I just have a question. I, I, with the mentor piece, and I love that. And I saw that typically the principal helps to set those new teachers up with the mentor. What happens when that relationship breaks down, or does it happen frequently?
It doesn't happen frequently, but it does occur. And what we do is we have Marcia and Andrea who are in the schools, they divide the schools. They become that voice for the mentor to go to because it's not always, I mean, for the new teacher to go to. It's not always easy for a new teacher to go to their principal and say, "Look, I think I'm having a personality conflict with whoever the mentor is." But by interceding in that way, we're able to make those changes and typically get them assigned to another mentor. And then, in most cases, that's worked out pretty well.
The new state requirements for the twenty hours of digital learning, is that required for the initial license, or do they not do that until they go for the continuing license?
They get that in the five-year continuing license once they get through. But there is a component of that that we do touch on when they're coming through the thirty hours of the, of the initial. You're right, that's a good question.
Who does the audit of this program?
I'm sorry, do you want?
Who does the audit of this program?
The state and federal, it's a audit, both Title II and this program itself. And they bring in state, other directors, other folks that, that do it in the state, state people if there's any left, and then the federal folks who like to drive down to the beach.
Is there a number you have in mind in terms of the percentage of educators you'd like to keep in the profession past the three years?
Well, I mean, typically, we want to keep all of them that are good. New Hanover sets the bar pretty high for teachers in that third year. And we, we really are looking for those folks that are above average. So in this program, there's normally about two hundred to two hundred and fifty teachers that are in this pipeline, so to speak. And maybe each year, we will counsel out between ten and twenty of those teachers. Some were never meant to be teachers and have discovered it, and that's pretty easy. And some we have to do some fairly heavy, you need to really find something else. So we, we stay in about the two hundred range. We have roughly eighteen hundred teachers that fall into these categories.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? If not, I would ask for approval of item number G. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The item is approved. Moving on to correspondence, item number sixteen. Does anyone have any correspondence that they would like to share? No?
For new board members, this is typically, if you get somebody who brings something to your attention and you want the whole board to be aware of that, this is where you would share that.
So it doesn't necessarily mean correspondence, like on a letter. It means it can be a lot of different formats.
Correct.
Nice note from a student or principal or something. Yep.
Good.
So, pretty broad. Item number seventeen, announcements.
This will probably be where we can try to set this next meeting.
I would like to have the senior staff, go ahead. And I think everyone probably knows the senior staff. But if not, I would like to make sure that, that you all introduce yourselves. We didn't do that at the beginning, but we've all had our moment of embarrassment, so I think you all should too. So, Eddie?
Start with me?
Start with you.
Eddie Anderson, Assistant Superintendent for Operations.
Eddie, tell them what falls under your department, it's a pretty broad department.
Yeah, it is. We have Facility Planning and Construction, which handles Thank you. See, you, now you remember. We have Facility Planning and Construction, which handles the current bond referendum projects as well as our annual capital projects. We have the Maintenance Department, which handles all of the in-house maintenance, anything from, you know, buildings, grounds, roofs, to, to HVAC, electrical, and other building systems. Child nutrition in all the schools, and transportation, and also our energy management program.
Do you have anything to do with redistricting?
I do not. It was, it was, it was not an agenda item tonight.
I'm John Wellmers, and I'm Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources. And Human Resource covers everything you already know Human Resources does, the hiring and the, the support and the recruitment, and sometimes the firing and the other difficult parts of Human Resources. We also handle all the benefits, which for a system of this size of four thousand employees can, can be a challenge. And, and then all licensure requirements are met. We have a substitute system that we use. The substitute system is a school system within a school system. They have to meet all the requirements that we look at in other ways, up to the licensure requirement. Some are not fully licensed, and that depends upon how they're qualified. And our system, our subsystem, is bigger than the neighboring school system's system. So that's, that's all in, in there, and it's, it works fairly well, pretty much.
With four thousand employees, the only employer that's larger than us is the hospital. We are the second-largest employer in the county.
Thank you.
LaShawn Smith, and I am the Assistant Superintendent for Instruction and Academic Accountability. And what falls under instruction is all things pretty much teaching and learning. So we do English language services. We are in, well, I am in charge of academic services. We do online learning in our division as well. We have, of course, all secondary as well as elementary. We have early childhood, we have testing and accountability. We have career and technical education programs.
Title I falls primarily in.
Yes, Title I federal programs falls under that as well. And I'm trying to think if, if I'm missing anyone.
Arts education.
Arts edu, oh, I feel so bad about that one. And arts education as, as well. So again, all things teaching and learning in the district along with, with testing and accountability.
Do you handle MTSS?
We do, actually, and professional development as well. So yes, that does fall under instruction.
Make sure my green light's on. I am Rick Holliday, I'm the Deputy Superintendent. And in that role, I do whatever Dr. Markley asks me to do. And that would include, when he's out of the district or is unavailable, I will act in his stead. But only if I'm in communication with him, I'm not going to go rogue on him. And you all know that. That was supposed to be funny. And also, I am in charge of Student Support Services. Student Support Services encompasses guidance counselors, social workers, McKinney-Vento, which is homelessness. We also do driver's ed, athletics. And we're also in charge of the specialty schools, the early colleges, and the alternative schools such as J.C. Rowe and Lake Forest Academy. Safety, and the Hearing Board, student discipline is all under our umbrella. You'll be, there's a student discipline hearing tomorrow. Many of you will be participating in that for the first time. That falls under our division. I'm trying to think if there's anything else off the top of my head. Oh, Lord, help me. Yes, ma'am, thank you for reminding me of that. Student assignment and, and student enrollment also falls under our division. We manage the, all the choice programs and all the student assignments to schools. We manage all of that, any transfer requests. Or when enrollment season begins in February, late February, early March, we will process all those applications. And then we will be scheduling our student assignment appeal hearings for June. And if you not experienced those, you will be experiencing something that you've never, ever experienced before in your life. It's a wonderful experience.
The designation Deputy Superintendent is not specific to student services. It's an additional designation for one of the Assistant Superintendents. And currently, as a senior one, it's with Dr. Holliday.
I'm Valita Quatlebaugh, I'm your Chief Communications Officer over at the Public Relations Division. That encompasses the Public Information Office, New Hanover County Schools Television, Facility Use Management, Media Relations, recognition that you saw tonight, and all the district's special events.
Hi, I'm Julie Askew, I'm the Executive Director for Special Education and Related Services. So if it's not all things teaching and learning under Dr. Smith, those fall under me. And we do cross paths a lot in, in serving those students mutually. We have about three thousand four hundred children in our district with individualized education programs. So they have their one solid document based on their own learning. Our program includes children from two years, six months, where we begin evaluation, through the age of twenty-two, where students age out of our program if they haven't already graduated. And the services include, of course, the special education services, but also school psychology, occupational therapy, physical therapy, one-on-one nursing, speech, and many other kinds of services.
Good evening, I'm Mary Hazel Small, I'm the Chief Financial Officer. And the Finance Division includes both the Finance and Purchasing Departments. Within Finance, we cover payroll, budget, accounts payable, general accounting and financial reporting. And as part of budget, grant compliance as well.
Mary Hazel, how big is that budget?
It just depends on the day. But the operating budget's about two hundred and eighty million. The, depending on where we are with the bond, you know, the, the capital budget can range from, you know, four million up to, you know, a hundred and sixty million, depending on the year.
I'm Russell Robenbark, and no, I don't know if we're related. I'm the Director of Technology. Dawn Brinson, I think many of you may have already met, is our Assistant Superintendent. If you've received a device from us, you, you've probably met Dawn. We, our house is kind of divided. Recently, with this position being created, giving Dawn a more focus on the instructional side of technology. I like to look at what I do as what I used to tell my four kids when they were all in the house. My job is to sort of just keep the machine going. And then Dawn can do what she does to help our kids and our, our teachers out in schools.
They oversee all of the devices, all of the networks. Media falls under them, or so our media centers are part of technology. And so really, technology is two, is two shops. One is that hardware side, and then one is the instructional side.
Thank you.
Dr. Markley scared me to death a minute ago when he said he wanted Mr. Robenbark to explain.
We'll give you a couple, we'll give you a couple, we'll give you a couple meetings before we put you on the spot, Bill.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, thank you all. I hope that was helpful to kind of put a name with the, a face. All right, one thing that we do need to come up with is a date for our work session. That was originally scheduled for the eighteenth, but I don't think that was going to work for everyone. So if you all can get your calendars out and we can come up with a date. I doubt that the, the week after Christmas is going to work for most people. I don't, I'm hearing crickets, so I'm assuming no. So if we want to plan on the first week in January, because our meeting is, our next meeting is scheduled for January the eighth. So do we have a date the first week in January that works?
Why don't we just get the second, if that works for everybody, we all should be back.
Does that work for everyone?
I'd, I'd prefer not with full-time job, but that's going to be my first day back after holiday. So I, I kind of need that day, the third or the fourth are doable.
Third works.
Okay, is the third?
Third's good.
Third?
First is on Tuesday.
The first is a Tuesday.
The third is a Thursday.
Is that third, third okay? All right, going once, going twice?
Question is.
What time?
Yeah, get the, the time.
Well, we got, we got the date, we nailed down, one thing at a time.
Now, I will tell you, not only, in addition to talking about redistricting, you've got a legislative luncheon on the seventeenth. So I need a discussion about legislative priorities. I mean, I can guess the legislative priorities, but I would much prefer to, to be representing the board that day. the board that day and not.
Can we, can you send us a list?
Yeah, I'll send you what the principals have done and what the teachers have done. And get, so that'll give you a, a head start on that.
And for redistricting, I assume that the new board members have, you've reached out about meeting with them?
They've either all met or set.
Okay.
I think you're scheduled, we've got one scheduled next week and I think I've, the others have met with Eddie.
So the, the prior, um, work session was, was set for 4:30. Does that time work for everyone?
And what, when does that happen?
It would be the third, January 3rd.
4:30?
At 4:30?
Okay.
Is that acceptable?
Yes.
Okay. So why don't we, so Tabitha, would you mind sending out a calendar invite for everyone?
Do you want to do that in the, here or in, uh, at three, in the conference room at the central office? I'm finding you the way.
Yeah. I don't have a preference. Does anyone have a preference here or?
I think it works better when we're in a smaller group setting, so we can hear each other better. I'd, I'd contact whenever we hear.
At the Cal on the beach. One or in this room?
No, right in here in the, as we did it before, yes.
Yeah. And it's, it's an open meeting, so it's more, it's typically more central for folks.
Okay. All right. So we will have it here in the small room at the Board of Ed Center at 4:30 on the 3rd.
And will that be a dual meeting where we discuss the legislative priorities?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, and if you all can, I, I think you all had, uh, received a list of the committee, the committees that we have currently. Um, if you could, before that time, send me kind of your wish list in order of, of where you'd like to be appointed. Um, I'm sure there are going to be some overlaps, but, um, if you could send those to me and then at that time, um, I'll go ahead and, uh, have that list, uh, back to everyone of, of where everyone will be appointed on, on those committees.
No, you sent out that list? I didn't get it.
Um, well, the, it was the list, the list, the, the list that's on the website.
I know where it is, but I mean, I thought maybe you sent it.
Yep. I can have Tabitha send it to everybody. And then actually there was one that was not included, the, the C-Tech Advisory Council. So if we could update that on the website. Uh, but yes, if, if you don't mind sending it to everybody.
The Hannah Block was something that-
It depends on which committee it is. Okay.
Was not part of the committee, but Mr. Hayes wanted to continue. So I don't know that that's one that we should have on that list.
I think that's the one that Jackie is a part of. Is it the Hannah Block? Is that the one that the arts?
Yeah, the Hannah Block asked for a, a, a district representative. It has been a board member in the past. Probably the one with the least time commitment, if you're looking at time commitment. You also, at the January 2nd meeting, we have to approve a representative to Cape Fear Community College and you have to do interviews. Because we've got, there's a statutory, uh, deadline on that one. Because there was a, uh, not a vacancy back because somebody left, not because it became open. So you have, I think it's 90 days to fill that position. Correct me if I'm wrong in the time way. Uh, so you will need to do interviews as well on that January date. So we're going to pack a lot into, uh, to that work session.
It might be 60 days. I'll have to check the statute. 90, then we can go on the table.
I think it's 60.
Yeah. I thought it was 60.
It's 60 from, and the question is, is 60 from the time we got notice or 60 from the time that we posted?
I'll check it.
But it's going to be, that's-
How are we doing the, how are we going to narrow down the finalist?
Well, typically what's in the, what you do and, is we will post it and we have. And you get letters of interest by the deadline and we have, I think, received several. And you would do a quick 15-minute interview with each of the candidates.
Okay.
In the past, we had, I don't think we, we had not narrowed it down because we had had, we'd, we, we didn't have so many that we, we couldn't handle it.
We interviewed all.
So we decided to interview everybody.
How many do we have so far?
I want to say we've got three who have applied, four now.
I think three or four.
Got four. So it's not a case where we have to, you'll spend 15 minutes, you'll look at their paperwork and as a group decide. So you will have one action item on January 2nd.
So Tabitha, would you mind sending out the, the question list that we had, we had done in the past? So everyone can take a look at that. And if, if there are any, if there's any feedback to that question list, that would actually also be helpful.
Are we able to preview the applications prior to the day? Or do we get them the day that they come in for interviews?
We get them.
You'll get them ahead of time.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah. It closes on the 18th.
Same way with student hearing package. You'll typically get those ahead of time, but you couldn't get those until you were sworn in, since it's got student information.
Right. And with the committees, how many normally would it be, uh, functional for us to set on in order for us to have a proper number and input, uh, with the committees that we have in place?
Well, I think it really depends on, on the committee itself. So like, you know, the, the pre-K one, that's, that's a fairly hefty one. So you might have that one and then maybe a smaller one. So it really depends on, on the, the time commitment, whereas the calendar committee, you've set on that one. I haven't, I haven't that. Did, did you do that one?
No. No, Janice did that. When you're looking at committees, the most time intensive is going to be the pre-K head start one. Because your work, that's, um, at least minimum monthly, probably longer, also getting in with Shannon on a regular basis. The Budget Committee is really a seasonal one. And this year, since we've got so many new members, we'll actually do that one most likely as a budget, a committee of the whole. So there won't be any, uh, you'd only, you do a subcommittee when you've got an experienced board that's been through it a bunch of times. But as a, with a whole board, do, most likely, I'll recommend we do that all together. So we'll schedule those meetings as, as board meetings. Hannah Block is, like I said, probably the least time intensive and doesn't really involve much. Parks and Rec is a, is a monthly board. So some of the others are ad hoc as needed. But definitely Budget, Pre-K are the, uh, are the two that are the most time intensive.
Yeah.
Calendar is, is seasonal.
Policy.
Policy is time, yeah.
Policy is, policy is a monthly.
And then AIG, I think they meet, AIG meets, I think, maybe three times a year.
Yeah.
Um, ACES, it's, yeah, once a month. But, uh-
And a lot of it is where your particular interest lies.
Mm-hmm. C-Tech, I want to say meets, what, once a month?
About quarter right now.
Once a quarter? Okay.
And that'll be at least once a quarter, uh, sometimes more.
But with, with that one, I think you would put in a, a lot more time to get to know the school, the programming, that kind of thing. So it really depends. And same with ACES, I think you would put in more time, um, to get to know, um, everything there is to know about the, the UC programming and the students and stuff. And same with AIG. I think it's, it's how much you want to put into it. So, that's kind of a nebulous answer, but you know, some of them-
No, it was very useful. I hope.
If it's connected to student, I think if it's, if it's connected to students, it's, it's however much time you want to invest in it.
Mm-hmm.
And then some, we, we might bring back, we were, uh, we were talking about bringing back some that, and I think I, I mentioned this to you about like the Parent Communications Committee. That might be what we want to revisit. We, we did create a policy, but it might be time to, to look at that and see how effective that has been.
Sorry.
So the meeting before the 3rd, we'll have some light snacks and sandwiches because that will be.
It will be. Thank you.
Dr. Markley, I just checked. It is 60 days, uh, to appoint a replacement trustee to the, to the Cape Fear Community College Board. 60 days from the date of the vacancy. Doesn't say notice of the vacancy.
So that's a really tight deadline.
Very tight deadline. Yes.
Okay.
So Ms. Adams, we were notified of the vacancy. Do you remember?
Yes.
Yeah. So that second was really, that's as close as you can cut it, folks.
Yep. Okay. So January 3rd it is. All right. So we've got the work session date. Talked about community appointments. And so the only other announcement is the regular meeting of the board, which, uh, the, the meeting date is scheduled for Tuesday, January the 8th at 5:30 PM in the Board of Ed Center. Would that bring us past our date if we announce it's there?
You could approve the person as a, it, we can make it an action item on the work session, so you can approve them that night.
Okay. So that would-
It's an internal meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. So as long as it's official? Okay. All right. Good.
Yeah. We, just so you know, anytime we have four of you together, I have to warn the meeting. And I need, by law, 48 hours to do that official notice of the meeting.
Okay. All right. Good. Is there anything else? Anything else anyone wants to say? You've made it through your first meeting? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any process questions to this meeting that we can help you clarify?
Uh, uh, this is going to sound silly. What's with the green lights over here?
We, we live broadcast all of our meetings.
Uh-huh.
So in order for the TV folks to hear it, it's got to go through the microphone.
So they know that it's on? So that's what they got to pick up on? Okay. I was just wondering what was going on with it.
Which means anytime you're up here, regardless if you have a meeting or not.
These mics are always live.
Oh, okay.
They're pretty sensitive.
Always being recorded if you talk.
Okay.
Always being recorded.
So if you want to pick on Mr. Workman's tie, you got to do it very quickly.
All right. Hearing nothing else, I would call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right. Second?
I'll say.
All right. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nobody opposed? All right. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Thank you.